Okay, hello and welcome to the Bailey Library. My name is Richard Forton. I've been your library director since 2010. First, I want to thank the Winthrop Public Library Foundation and the town of Winthrop for making the event possible. The event was organized by a committee made up of myself, along with Winthrop resident Michael Levy right here from the League of Women Voters, Winthrop resident Joe Petrowski, your Kennebec County Commissioner, and help from new town manager Anthony Wilson, who is here. I don't know where he's sitting. Okay, right there in the back, welcome Anthony. Glad to have you in town. I want to take a brief moment to talk about what we're gonna do here. Our timekeeper tonight is newly hired Adult Service Librarian, Winthrop native Lee Wilkinson. He's standing in the back. Welcome to your candidate forum for the special election happening this Tuesday, the 13th, to fill a recently vacated town council seat. One of the hallmarks of a successful democracy is a robust civil society. The civil society, that's all of you here now, enables citizens to have a voice in their government. We are hosting and organizing this here at the library because the public library is one of the strongest indicators of a well-built civil society and a flourishing democracy. Democracies are built on the ability of citizens like you to educate yourselves and make informed decisions. So first some housekeeping, please turn your cellphones off. Please turn them off, right now. There is a librarian in the back of the room that can give you tech support if you need it, but please. We have a restroom down the hall. On the left, the key is on the water fountain outside the bathroom door. Please leave the key where you found it, so the next person can get it. Some rules for the evening, we are taking audience questions for the second half of the program, but only in the form of written questions that must be submitted to our mediator, which is a word that we made up for the night. Mike Levy. Question cards are on the small table over there by the exit. If a question comes to you during the event, please quietly and as subtly as possible fill one of the cards out, hand it to Mike Levy. We are going to try to wrap up around eight. We will take as many questions as possible, but with six candidates, we may not get too many. There will be 90-second opening and one-minute closing statements from each candidate, in between a series of questions from myself and then some from you, the audience. This is not a debate. There will be no extra time given to candidates for rebuttal. Candidates are not allowed to question each other directly. We have chosen the order of opening statements out of a hat at random, the questions, both mine and yours, along with their closing statements thereafter, using that random order. The closing statement will be done in reverse order of the opening statement regardless of where we are in that rotation. So, without further ado, I want to first introduce the candidates. Unfortunately Gil Susie couldn't make it. He is represented by that piece of equipment sitting on the table. Gil, can you say hi so we can make sure we hear you?
I'm here. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Richard? Can you hear me, Richard? Oh, Richard? You, Richard? Richard? Oh, Richard?
No, he just has his volume down.
Oh, Richard?
Do you have rebell tech support?
Yeah, people are messaging in that they can all hear me. So Gil just needs to figure out to turn this stuff up. Lee, maybe put in the chat to tell Gil that his laptop is turned down, that he needs to turn it off. We got Don Ellis, we've got Roy Waymoth, Aaron White, David Ram, who was the chair of the council when I was hired back in 2010, and Priscilla Jenkins, who was on the council most of the years that I've been here. So, it is now time for opening statements. Each candidate will have 90 seconds. We ask that candidates be respectful of the time, but I will jump in with a friendly reminder if needed. Lee, once he is done talking to Gil, will be out here with signs to let you know where you're at, okay?
So my volume is turned up all the way.
Yeah, Gil, unfortunately, we cannot do tech support tonight, so if you're not able to hear us, we're gonna move on.
I can hear, I can hear you, and people online can hear me.
Okay, good. If you can hear me, we can hear you. That's a hallmark of a two-way conversation, and we are good to go, I would say. That's all we need to solve. Okay. Like I said, order chosen at random. It's gonna start down here with Priscilla and move down the table. Each of you has 90 seconds for an opening statement. Priscilla, starting with you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Oh, I can hear you now, too. I'm delighted to see everybody out, and we have a lot of people on Zoom, which means we have an interested community. I love it. I want to quote from the 1971 Bicentennial Wish for the Future. "It is our hope that Winthrop in 2071 will find life good in a clean and beautiful world, a world at peace. To that end, we dedicate our energies." And we are two years past halfway to that mark, so I think we're doing pretty well, and I think we still have a long way to go, especially on the world peace stuff. But I want to have a seat at the table again. I thought I wanted to retire, and if you retire me, I will. I am eager to participate in the discussions that we have ongoing. I see it as being our way to the future, that the lakes belong to everybody, and our environment needs to be clean and so be it. Thank you.
Thank you. David Ram.
First off, is this on?
Yep.
First off, I'd like to thank the library director, Richard Forton, county commissioner, Joe Petrowski, and attorney, Mike Levy, and the town manager and the library trustees for putting this on. Next, I'd like to thank all the other candidates, who have shown there is a lot of interest in making sure the town is well taken care of, and I thank them for running. I ran because a lot of citizens have asked me to for the past couple of years, and after attending several meetings, I realized that I should run, for the simple fact that people expect respect, dignity, and common sense out of their council. So thank you very much.
Candidates, if you turn the mic on it on, yep, turn it off. There you go. And then when you speak, just turn it on. Yep.
All right, let's see if this is, okay. All right, first off, thank you to the Bailey Library for hosting this forum, and all the individuals that made it happen. My name is Aaron White, and I'm running as a writing candidate for Winthrop Town Council. I was born and raised here in Winthrop, graduated as a member of the Winthrop High School class in 2004. After high school, I attended the University of Southern Maine, where I graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminology and a minor in business administration. While attending USM, I obtained my certification as an emergency medical technician, and as an EMT, I dedicated over 10 years providing pre-hospital emergency medical service to the town of Winthrop and its surrounding communities. During my time working as an EMT, I developed a passion for medicine and public service. Subsequently, I attended the University of New England and graduated with a master's degree in PA Medical Science and acquired my certification as a PA, and I work as an acute care medical provider here in the central Maine region. I consider myself fortunate to have been able to serve the residents of Winthrop during my time with the ambulance service, and I would be honored to be able to serve you on the town council. Thank you.
Roy?
Hello. Hello. First of all, I'd like to start by thanking everybody here at the library and all the attendants here in the office, audience. It looks like there's quite a bit of interest, which is good. Name is Roy Waymoth. I'm a lifelong resident here in Winthrop. I was born in Winthrop and have never moved away. Graduated Winthrop High School class in 2001. I do, I've been fairly involved in the community. I have a business that I own and run, Proto Auto Transport, it's a towing company here in town. Also am a manager of Columbia Classic Cars, which is a auto restoration shop. Some of you guys have probably driven by and seen the cool cars sitting up front. I have four kids that are in the school system. One of them actually just graduated Sunday. We have a very active family. I'm active in the community of Coach Football and, you know, a few other things around town. I've been coming to the council meetings for the last couple of years, been interested in what's going on and paying attention in all the different facets of business around town, and I see that there's a lot of attention that needs to be taken in the way that the council is run, managed, and I'm just hoping I can help by putting in some of my input. Well, thanks, I'm out there.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? Good evening. My name is Don Ellis. First of all, I'd like to thank Richard Forton, the Bailey Library, and all those that had a hand in putting this event together. I'll just give a little bit about my background. I have a bachelor's degree in public administration from the University of Maine at Augusta. I am a former town councillor. I served on Winthrop Town Council from 2013 to 2014, after which time I began my career in state government. I started off in an entry-level position and worked my way up to become an assistant division director with the Department of Health and Human Services. These years of public service have given me tremendous experience in human resource management, public budgeting and finance, project management, and working as a team to make difficult decisions, all of which are very important skills for the town council. Aside from my education and experience, I feel that one of my best attributes is my decision-making process. I fully recognize that there are things that I don't know. Therefore, I consult with others before making all of my decisions. I ask questions of the experts. I ask questions of those with differing viewpoints. I ask questions of those that are going to be impacted, and most importantly, I listen to all of them. Then, after careful consideration, I make my decisions. The reason I'm running for the town council is that I want to be of service to this community. Being on the town council is a good way for me to use my skills in a way that will benefit this town. I greatly appreciate your vote on June 13th. Thank you.
Gil?
All right, can you hear me now? Can you hear me, Richard? All right. I'm calling you from Nebraska tonight, so it's probably why it doesn't sound all the greatest. I'm far away. Again, first of all, I want to thank everybody for putting this on, for everybody. Dialogue is always a critical component of any vibrant community, where every resident's ideas, concerns, and suggestions are welcome. With that being said, I've had the opportunity to work with a coalition that now has grown to over 600 residents, people who wanted to be heard but lacked the pathway. What the Stop the Winthrop Quarry Group has accomplished shows me what this town can get accomplished, when its residents come together along with town officials to find solutions to challenges. This coalition is what prompted me to run for the unexpected vacancy and to represent their interests at the big table, so to speak. However, the more conversations I had with local residents, the more I became convinced that I can help make a positive difference in many other areas. In other words, I'm simply not a one-trick pony. My career in telecommunications management has given me a strong background in qualities that, in my humble opinion, the town needs. Firstly, leadership that brings people and ideas together. Secondly, processes and procedure design which clarify some of the hurdles that can present themselves. And lastly, business development, which will bring new sources of revenues to the town. These are the three areas which the town needs to be strong in, in order to navigate us to a great future. Attracting new businesses to the area is an area of priority, as this will help reduce or at least minimize the impact on local taxpayers. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Okay. Gil, are you able to hear us okay?
I can hear you guys okay, and the folks online seem to be able to hear me okay.
Good, we can hear you 100%. I just want to make sure you can hear us, okay?
Yep, no, I can hear you.
Because you can't see us that well. When you're out of time, I'm gonna cut in, all right? Because it's not fair to the candidates up here. They're gonna sign in their face and shut them up, all right?
Yeah, true.
First order, so Gil, you've got the first answer to this one, and like I said, once you hit 90 seconds, I'm gonna cut you off, all right?
Okay, that's fair enough.
What are the biggest challenges Winthrop faces at this time, and what should be done to address them?
So maybe we need to look at this differently. Instead of challenges, let's think of it as opportunities. As the state money coming back to towns might be getting reduced in the future, our biggest challenge is not gonna be on how to cut the budget any deeper, as we're already running pretty lean at this point. Our opportunity is gonna be how to increase revenue by attracting new businesses to Winthrop. The residential taxpayer can only bear so much, so it's imperative that we look to new sources of revenue to keep our vibrant community alive. The second area of opportunity seems to be in our zoning and ordinance area. We seem to be on the back foot. We seem to be reactive instead of proactive. For example, the marijuana ordinance, the solar ordinance, the mooring ordinance, and now maybe possibly the standing gravel ordinance. We should not need moratoriums every time someone comes to town looking to establish a business. These processes and procedures should already be in place. An opportunity exists to review the ordinances, to see what fits in what areas of town, and to make the necessary corrections that allow us to take full advantage of all opportunities. Thank you.
Okay. Housekeeping reminder, we went over it. You're going to mute your cellphone now if it is not muted. Thank you very much. Next up in order is Don Ellis.
The top three challenges, the top three challenges from my perspective are future budgets, the mooring ordinance, and the proposed quarry project. Those are the items that folks around town are talking about. As far as the budgets are concerned, the town needs to come up with a long-range plan. That plan needs to be followed. Pushing projects to the right often means that you end up spending more money on the project when prices tend to go up down the road. Also, following a long-term plan helps to anticipate when and if there will be a revenue surplus or shortfall. As far as the other two items are concerned, the council and the town need to do their homework. Issues need to be fully researched by having conversations with members on both sides of the arguments, as well as independent experts.
Thank you.
Some of the, as I stated, some of the biggest challenges that this town faces at this time, one of them is housing. Particularly, you know, some of the ideas that I've been discussing with some of the residents around town is utilizing some of the vacant buildings around town for some of, maybe some of the elder communities, elders in the community, and which would in turn attract some of the businesses around, some fresh businesses in town, which would help the tax base and budget situation we have going on. The other, one of the other big concerns I have about the, some of the challenges what they're facing are three words: ethics, transparency, and accountability. These are big words that really mean a lot, and we have seen in the past couple of years some faltering of those three areas, and it would be great to be able to get that type of stuff under control, and I think it would be, make, result in some real positive changes for the council as well as the entire community.
Okay. The challenges that face Winthrop residents are quite significant, in my view, and one that's not discussed a lot. And as a medical provider, in this area, I'm extremely concerned by the lack of equitable access to a full-service hospital system that can provide robust and critical medical services. Not having access to a full-service hospital system in this region has resulted in a fragmented healthcare service or system that has had significant consequences to the health and well-being of Winthrop citizens, along with the citizens in our area. I've seen the desperation and frustration caused by the healthcare challenges we face as a community, including the harm caused by the opioid epidemic, and this is why I believe this is a situation that deserves our attention and as a community, some action. When you look at the challenges facing Winthrop, the significant cost in living, rising taxes, aging population, and Southern Maine's housing crisis, which continues to bring people to this region in search for affordable housing, these challenges are only compounded by the lack of access to full and adequate services by a full hospital services. So as a member of the council, I would advocate for policies that decrease the cost of living, improve access to service, ensure that we are strategically investing in areas that improve the quality of living here in Winthrop. Thank you.
As any town official knows, every town has problems. Winthrop has some problems. Two of these problems seem to have come to the fore this past year. One is the mooring ordinance, and the other is the quarry. And the people who have brought these to the council are very concerned about these items, and we should listen to them. But none of our problems are insurmountable, as they have mentioned, you know. Medical care is very difficult for a town to manage. It's what we approve of. We want everyone to have equal access to medical care. The mooring ordinance and the quarry, I will address later in the evening when that question arises. But another problem we have is the total, what seems to be, lack of respect for people attending town council meetings. That's not the way you run a meeting. So I will address the public communication problems of the council in another question later on tonight. Thank you.
We'll see if this works, okay. I think the key issues that I would like to address in the council are improving our revenues. We need to think a lot more about how to do some economic development and get, we, our town, who were until 2000 a business and industry-supported town, we now are a resident-supported town, and we are all feeling it. So we do need to work on this. There are a lot of people who've been doing some things, but we still have properties available for new businesses. I think that communications is a huge issue, and I sat on a council that, year after year, trimmed costs for communicating, cut mail costs, we cut, we kept to a bare minimum our technology, and we need to address these. The gravel pit and the mooring will come later. We do have specific questions on those, and I also want to indicate that the, blank. I think I'm out of time anyway.
Okay. Next question, so Priscilla, we're gonna be starting with you, okay? What do you all think are the most important functions of municipal government? Are there any specific areas of Winthrop's town government that should be reduced or eliminated? Are there any that should grow or be enhanced?
I don't know of anything that we need to take off the list that we provide. We are, we have been a full-service town, so I think in addition to our roads and buildings, and we have a lot still of delayed maintenance that we need to cover. We went through a tough period of time as a country and as a town with both national issues, like the 2008 event and, or events, and then in our own house, we had problems with accounting and making errors that cost us money. So we need to pay attention to those things. As a service-centered town, we have really appreciated our firefighters, our police departments, not all towns have these, and of course, our ambulance squad, and I'm one of the people that Aaron has talked to about how we can improve care. Our library is a stellar draw to our town, and our schools have been too, and we need to make sure that now that we are on our own as a school district, that we continue to fund our schools well. I'm happy to say all the kids are running, finishing, thank you.
The function of any government is first and foremost, safety and security. I saw this firsthand in my first term on the council. I served four terms. In January 1998, in the ice storm, we wound up having council meetings two and three times a week. If not in person, we would be called on the phone. The biggest thing that helped a lot was that the Red Cross came in and helped set up a shelter in the grade school gym. Police and fire departments were out. The ambulance and police were checking on the elderly and homebound. If they needed anything, they would get it for them, or they would bring them to the gym. Next, the fire department and public works, they were spending all their time going around the roads, cleaning up the roads to make them passable. So the thing I find the most is that we can't do away with these departments, because, or cut them back. These departments need to have their reserve funds returned, because as it stands now, if they need to buy an ambulance or a fire truck, they're taking out a bond, or they're leasing the vehicle, and I'm out of time. So thank you.
The most important function of any town government is to provide infrastructure that allows residents to live happy and meaningful lives. That includes providing public services that contribute to the safety and well-being of residents, schools, EMS, fire, law enforcement, code enforcement, public works, recreation, social services, utilities, all these things. It is also a function of town government to provide the space for public discussion, debate, in order to facilitate the delivery of these services. I think as a community, we should be very careful about reducing or eliminating any current services that this town has. We went through a period of cutting and decreasing services not too long ago, and it's important to keep in mind that short-term savings rarely yield any long-term gains. And though it is tempting to want to curtail services during the times of financial pressures and costs of living increases, it's important to view these issues in context. It is ultimately detrimental to the overall economic health of a community, so therefore it is important to strategically invest in improved economic conditions for businesses and families who reside or want to reside here in Winthrop. So I do believe we should strategically invest in improved economic conditions for businesses So I do believe we should strategically invest in protecting our natural resources like the lake streams and the land that surround these vulnerable resources, but also invest in a business development strategy that allows a town to facilitate sustainable economic development that is beneficial to the growth of our community.
Some of the most important pieces of the functions of municipal government, there are many. The, the financial needs of the, taking care of the financial needs of the town, the infrastructure of the town, the responsibilities of making sure the funds are available to, to all the departments, EMS, fire, and making sure also that the, it's done a responsible manner so the taxpayers shoulder as little of the burden as possible. The, one of the, one of the other key functions of the government, municipal government, is communication. Communication to the taxpayers, communication to the people of the town and anybody that is involved or has a part or input in the process from taxpayers paying their taxes all the way up to, you know, people that are out getting the services done. Communication is, is key and as far as the reducing and eliminating any of the services, functions or services, I, I don't think that, that reducing or eliminating or even expanding is, is part of the issue. I think really what needs to happen is the communication needs, we, we should work on getting communication in line and a lot of
As far as Winthrop is concerned. As far as Winthrop is concerned, I have to say that the school is probably the most important function for this town. The value of providing a high-quality education to children cannot be overstated. Regardless of a field or study or career path a child chooses, it all starts right there in the classroom. Also of very high importance are our public safety departments. While not every town has its own police, fire, and ambulance services, I am of the opinion that this town is best served by managing those services in-house. By managing them in-house, the town is in control over important items such as staffing, purchasing, and following departmental policies. I don't feel at this time that any of the town functions, functions need to be reduced or eliminated. That said, the council and town staff should be always on the lookout for efficiencies, ways to save money, and/or generate increased revenue. Thank you.
Municipal, municipal government should be a caretaker of the residents' interests. The residents pay, and in some cases pay dearly, for their municipal government, and they should expect a well-functioning machine. The people who volunteer on these boards and councils do not need to be treated with derision, whether it's from the public or their fellow board council members. This is one of the reasons why it's imperative to establish a communication channel for residents to voice their concerns and share their ideas before issues boil over. As far as reductions or eliminations are concerned, in order to be recognized as a town, we need to provide, we need to provide basic services to our residents. Can we look into opportunities to lower the cost of some of these services? Absolutely. But only if we get more bang for the buck. When all is said and done, I'm more in favor of growing the tax base through the introduction of new businesses, new housing opportunities and such than I am to cutting what already seems like a pretty lean budget. Is there some work to do? Are there unrealized opportunities? Oh yes, there are, but it will need the support of the residents every step of the way. Thank you.
Okay. It is no secret that the mooring and quarry, quarry issues are the two biggest topics in town today, which may account for the unprecedented number of candidates running for just one seat. The question is, what is your position on the mooring ordinance and why? And what is your position on the quarry issue and why? A two-part question, and therefore you'll have two minutes to answer instead of 90 seconds. And Gil, we're starting with you.
All right, thank you. I'm not sure we need a mooring ordinance that targets one end of one lake in Winthrop. I've not seen the studies that support that. We have many bodies of water and if the town residents strongly feel that this is needed across all bodies of water, then let's get a cross-representation of vested parties to the table, use the available data that we have, and come up with something that benefits the residents of, of Winthrop. Whichever way we go, we need to be transparent. And if an ordinance is needed and wanted, then it needs to be developed in the sunlight. Less than savory communications going back and forth between town officials often leads to miscommunications and distrust on the part of the residents. We don't need every issue in town being a Kennebec Journal story. This needs to stop. Yesterday, I realize we like town officials to make decisions for us, but some decisions need expertise other than what's available on these boards and councils. The quarry issue is a perfect example of that. People from all walks of life contacted me to offer their expertise on the matter. Most did not want their names known for fear of backlash. Really? Is this what we've come to as a town? The more research we did on this subject, the more became clear that the PM 2.5 particles released from the drilling, blasting, crushing, and conveyance of stone material is a clear and public, and present public danger. This material quickly goes airborne, much like smoke. It's invisible to the naked eye and follows the prevailing air currents right over the middle school, high school, and eventually the downtown area. The EPA is in the process of drafting tougher rules on this same material. Why? Because as the science becomes clearer, the studies more numerous, the dangers to people's healths and lungs reveals themselves. Maine already has the highest lung cancer rate per capita in the nation with over 1,600 cases last year. We don't need to add to that. Thank you.
One of the candidates, one of the candidates that does not have a position on either of them, that's, either one of them are the reason that I'm running. As far as the mooring ordinance concerned, it is concerned, like I said, I don't have a position. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I have a decision-making process that I follow. I want to speak to and listen to members of both sides of this argument so that I can fully understand why they have their opinions. Then I want to talk to some experts, for example, folks at the Cabusie Watershed, like to gather their thoughts on what this mooring ordinance does or does not accomplish. At the end of the day, I believe the council can come up with a solution that fits the needs and wants of both sides. As far as the quarry project is concerned, I'm also undecided on that. From what I've read, it seems that there are very legitimate health and safety concerns. I could support this project if there were incredibly strong assurances that health and safety concerns specifically, specifically with regard to air and water quality are mitigated. But again, I'd want to hear from the experts. I know the DEP is already working on this, but I'd also, once again, I'd like to hear from the Cabusie Watershed District to see what they have to say about water quality issues. I would also like to hear from some other independent experts. Thank you.
The mooring ordinance. I, there's a few things, I, I have a strong opinion on the mooring ordinance and my opinion is anything that starts out, you know, with, with some correspondence that this is not a typical mooring ordinance, as there's been no problem that has presented itself, kind of tells the whole story along with the rest of the the email that most people probably in here have seen. That, if this was done in the daylight, if this was done up to ethical standards, if this was done transparently, and this is what the people of the town wanted, then there would be no problem with me having a mooring, mooring ordinance that wasn't targeting a certain group of people, which is not allowable by, by law. We have, there's been a lot of stuff with a mooring, a lot of pieces of the mooring ordinance that, that originated behind closed doors, behind a smokescreen with unethical ill intentions. My opinion is it just needs to go away, start fresh, if, if the townspeople decide that we need one. And as it stands right now, we're still supporting something that was done with ill, ill intentions behind a smokescreen. The, I, I also want to acknowledge that I, I, I do have a boat down at the end of the lake. I'm not trying to hide that. And I will, you know, if I get in there, I will be not voting on any of it, as should have been done in the very beginning by everybody that had their own personal involvement. Is that out of time for everything?
Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay. So I'm not convinced. Hello?
I think it's on.
Oh, it is? Okay. I'm not convinced, oop, now it's on, okay. I'm not convinced that the issues themselves account for the unprecedented number of candidates running. Rather, they highlighted the issue of dysfunctional town government council. The mooring ordinance should be repealed and further discussion should resume. And that's based on just the actions between some of the council and the town manager that became apparent that were unprofessional and inappropriate. I think the ordinance was drafted in a response to legitimate concerns. However, the process lacked the transparency that is clearly required in order to secure town residents' buy-in to that process or any regulation. The quarry issue is unique in that we have a planning board and regulations in town that are in place to address that type of activity. I do think the planning board has an obligation to the community in fulfilling their duty by researching the potential harms, unintended consequences before they would approve any kind of commercial activity that impacts the environment. And I'll end this with, the, the town does have a vested interest in resource management and regulation. We've seen the consequences of human activity harming our local ecosystems with the cavalier dumping of chemicals into the old town landfill and the subsequent leaching of these chemicals into Anavescrop Lake. So in both cases, I do think it is appropriate that the town has a role in evaluating both activities. Thank you.
To this day, I still have not been given a good reason why we needed a mooring, mooring ordinance. I've asked several people. One of the reasons I got from a council was that people were complaining because they didn't like the looks of the boats on the lake. Well, that means they must not like the looks of the boats moored on the coast. So I couldn't see that as reason. The next one, I was told that the ordinance was put into the refurbishing of the town beach. Well, why would that have, what would that have to do with refurbishing the town beach? Then I was told during a council meeting that the snails were disappearing. Well, that is hardly any part of the boats. The DEP says the boats don't contribute to any harm to the cove. But in the cove over the past several years, we've had migratory birds, geese, ducks, gray-blue heron, and recently, the past three, four years, we've had muskrats. What do they eat? Snails, migratory birds, muskrats, even beaver. They eat snails. If there are snails there, they will come. So I say repeal the ordinance, problem solved. As far as the quarry is concerned. For years, having been born and raised here in Winthrop, there was a quarry out there, out on Turkey Lane. It wasn't far from the chicken barns. And there was no problems. But now, with the new owners, they're expanding, making it larger, and they say I'm, I'm out of time. But one thing I'd like to finish up with, I have to finish it up. For me, I'd like to see the town do an environmental impact statement, and I think that will tell us what we have to do.
I will start by telling you that I am a lakefront owner and a cabin that was built in the 1930s when, when the nature had ten months of our lakesides to itself. I'm very concerned about environment and that is, when we started talking about ordinance on the lakes, I don't know how we ended up with just moorings, but it should be a holistic look. I think an environmental impact thing is a good idea because my well is one of those that, you know, longer is viable. We had to get town water and the town had to pay to move the water out there. So I think this needs a better look, not just a targeted look, so that we have a beautiful Winthrop into the future. Regarding the gravel pit quarry, I would love to see some industry come into town, but I do not think that something at the top of the hill with winds taking all the air from whatever it produces, plus water running downhill, I worry about the wells there also. So I have a lot of questions about air quality, radon, noise, wells and water, traffic and roads. We definitely need more science in looking at these problems going forward. And that's pretty much where I stand on these.
Okay. This is the last question that I have. Priscilla, we're gonna start with you. So one thing that we keep hearing and has been brought up pretty much by each of you tonight is that the issues that we're discussing have been accompanied by difficult communications. What should the council do to improve the way it communicates with the public? And also, what should the public do to improve the way that they communicate with the council? Priscilla, starting with you.
All right. Well, I, as I earlier said, I was really distraught that we were cutting mailing costs so that we at least had two notices a year when they send out tax bills because we could mail it home. Now, that doesn't cover everybody because not everybody is a property owner. We never have had a communications person, and I know one of the pluses, the big pluses in my mind is that our new town manager has a communications history, so I hope he'll be good in leadership on that. We did try working with the schools and that worked sometimes. Again, better funding for both the town and the schools in terms of developing our own, perhaps our own local access station. We have lots of possibilities. And I fully agree that communications have been very, very short because of lack of, basically, lack of funds. We have not been able to do more than we have. We've met the bare requirement on, on legal requirements so that public notices were out. But how many of you know where public notices are? Anyway, I, this, these are, I, I would love to see, like, in fact, I was supposed to call Greenfield and say, hey, you know, how do you get your monthly paper out? We need to do that. Thank you.
For communications, integrity, trust, and respect. The three greatest words anybody could have. And the three greatest things that you can do to other people. Unfortunately, the lack of respect and some host, actual hostility by some council members towards the public at the meetings, I could not believe it. I was council chair for four years out of my 12. I always allowed the people to speak at the meetings. We didn't have a two-minute warning. We didn't have a three-minute warning. We had, the people come. They make their time. They take their time to come to a meeting to speak to the council about a specific item. You can't limit them to time. If they take five seconds or five minutes, I don't care. I want to hear their concerns. As anything else, if you give respect, As anything else, if you give respect, you will receive respect. Thank you. I'm David Graham, and I approve this message.
Uh, so this has been a longstanding issue at town council meetings, uh, here with the, I mean, I've been going to town council meetings since I was in high school and I can tell you lots of stories if you have time. Um, but, uh, whenever there's contentious issues before the council, um, emotions, you know, are involved in many of the decisions the council's tasked with making. Um, so it's understandable that many people have strong opinions, right? Um, however, we need to first remember and foremost that we live in this community together. Uh, and we all want what is best for the community. Um, civil discussion and debate is a framework, uh, for which our democracy was, uh, founded upon. Uh, so we should always encourage respectful discourse. The council should adopt and adhere to a rule of order policy, such as Robert's Rules, that facilitate meaningful and productive dialogue between its members and members of the public. We should probably make improvements to the space that it's utilized for meetings and do a better job at clarifying the roles of individuals present at the meetings. For example, town employees versus council members versus members of the community. Um, I know there's a discussion already underway about improving the sound system and some of the technology with the live feeds and recordings, uh, and so I support that as well. Thanks.
Respect is the key to communication to, between the council and taxpayers, both ways, not just one. Um, and, and that's something that we at times, uh, lack in, that as well as both ways, uh. So, that's the first thing, i- is get that barrier, get past that barrier. Then the, the other thing is we need, I, it's my feeling that we need to utilize, uh, the stuff that is available to us in 2023, uh, the internet, uh, the town website. Uh, the newspapers is a great idea, but they, you know, the people that read the newspapers on a daily basis are dwindling, particularly in the younger generations. Uh, there needs to be a conscious effort put forward to, uh, to get the notifications out, to get the, uh, people involved, the community involved and, and hear their opinion. I think it's very important that people get a chance to speak, that people, you know, if they're coming up there and they give the, they, they're taking the time to take, away from their daily lives to come up and put, give their input, they should be able to speak. I look back at one particular instance, uh, just a few months ago, where we had a, an individual who had written a letter and he came up five different times because he was limited to a couple of minutes each time to read his letter. He finally got through it. Uh, he should have been made to, he should have been allowed to read the letter that he took the time to write.
I have a few recommendations on this. Uh, first of all, public meetings should be clearly structured so that each agenda item has a period of discussion among the council members, which is then followed by a period of public comment that's specific to that issue. Only after all of the discussions from the public are heard should there be a motion made on the topic. Robert's Rule should always be followed. Additionally, a standing agenda item for each council meeting should be other business or new business. This is an opportunity for members of the public to bring important matters before the council. Second, it's important for the public to stay in touch with the town council, and that's a two-way street. I would recommend the council providing a periodic report that would be disseminated to subscribers via email or text. It also be posted on the town's website. My understanding is that the town's website has a way for, for the public to get in touch with specific council members. Public should use this often to ask questions, weigh in on issues, and bring new business to the council's attention. Last but certainly not least, both sides must listen and participate respectfully. Regardless of how passionate someone feels about an issue, they must be respectful of those with differing viewpoints. It's possible to disagree, but still be respectful. Thank you.
Gil, you're up.
One of the most frustrating experiences is trying to listen in on board and council meetings through Zoom. That room has horrible acoustics. So step one should be to fix the online communication experience for residents who are not able to make it in person to these meetings. Step two, uh, would be the availability of materials to be discussed that night prior to the meeting. I've been in the meeting where halfway through the meeting, a letter is handed out to, to the audience and to the, to the board members, and I've got about three minutes to read a two-page letter and formulate a response. Very, very frustrating to be a member of the audience that night. Step three, I guess, involves the town officials. If a resident takes fifteen to twenty minutes to, to write a, a letter, uh, the least they should expect when they send it in is some type of confirmation that the letter was received. Not asking for a resolution to, to whatever the contents of the letter were, but just a canned response, thank you for your email, uh, we'll look into this. Thank you and have a good night, right? That's not too much to ask for, I don't think, for, for any member of, of the, the serving, uh, officials. But lastly, I think it's like, like somebody said, it's a two-way street. We need to respect the folks that we've elected and who are volunteering in most of these capacities on these boards, and they need to respect us. So, so communication channels like, like a blog or, or something of that sort needs to be opened up so that people can see what the ideas that are being bandied about are. Ideas begat ideas as well as opportunities begat opportunities. So, thank, thank you.
Okay. That concludes the first part of our program. My trusted sidekick is gonna take over, uh, from me. We will take as many audience questions as time permits, okay? Uh, each candidate, you're going to be limited to only forty-five seconds for this one, so it's gonna be a little quicker, uh, and obviously, you have no idea what's being asked, neither do I, so it's gonna be, uh, a little bit more on your feet for that. Uh, candidates, you may choose to pass on an audience question if you want to. You don't have to answer, uh, every question that's asked if you don't think, uh, you need to. Uh, however, if you wrote down a question that pertains to only one candidate and Mike chooses to ask it, everybody will get a chance to, to answer, regardless of who it's directed at, you'll all get forty-five seconds if you want it, okay? Um, and we're going to go in reverse order of how we just ended. Uh, so Mike, you're gonna come up, take the mic, and you're gonna start with Gil.
Okay.
All right?
Michael Levy, you're, whoops, is that working? Can you hear me? Michael Levy, you're mediator, I, I'm not quite sure what that means tonight, but, I received from members of the audience, uh, eleven questions. Two of them were, whoops. Two of them were, this one? Two of them asked questions that were questions precisely presented to the candidates, so I'm not gonna go through those. I looked through the questions and I thought, maybe I can combine some of them so that, uh, if two people were asking essentially the same question, I could put them together. All these questions are different. So then I thought I'd ask them in the order that they were handed in, um, because maybe we won't finish things tonight with nine questions. And I've decided that I'm just gonna grab them randomly and ask them. A, 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 a much of a scientific approach. Recently, there was an ad in the advertiser which came from a council member apparently, which said that there was irresponsible spending of taxpayer money. And that it was an eye-opener, a real eye-opener to see the irresponsible spending. So, can each of you give an example of what you believe is irresponsible spending that's taking place in town now?
Starting with Gil.
Gil, Gil, begin.
Well, I think I'm gonna have to pass on that because I really haven't studied the budget. Uh, I, I have over the years, you know, kinda kept the price of the cuts and all that. But as far as irresponsible spending, you know, and I'm not, I, I don't know of anything right now. Like I said earlier, we, there's only so much we can cut this budget. Thank you.
I can't really speak to anything that's currently happening. I haven't combed through the budget, but I will say when I served on the council nine and ten years ago, uh, we combed through the budget because revenue sharing was proposed to go away at the time. And we found there's very little waste in town government. At the end of the day, if you wanna cut the budget, you're gonna have to start looking at what services need to go away.
Uh, before each of you speak, there's a request online for me to say your name. Uh, there is video, but sometimes the L takes a second to go over to you, so. Roy?
So the biggest, uh, thing I can think about for irresponsible spending is, uh, the one that comes to mind, uh, is, is happened, uh, last year's budget, uh, which carried through to this year's budget is fourteen to seventeen percent pay increases for, uh, municipal staff, uh, right across the board, and, and that is not something that is seen in the private sector whatsoever. Uh, it is something that is unheard of and puts the pay in most positions well above surrounding communities. Uh, it is something that's done and is, it's, it's irreversible, um. However, it's an example of irrespon- irresponsible spending, in my opinion.
Aaron?
Okay, um, so I, I, I have looked at the budget, um, multiple times over multiple years. Um, and I cannot specifically point to any one item that I would could consider as, uh, certainly irresponsible spending. There may be spending that, uh, could have been done under conditions that, uh, were wiser, you know, whether we were bidding or being a bit more competitive. I think that is probably our problem at the moment. Um, but we certainly, um, we have a very lean budget and we've gone through a process last few years of certainly going over it and over and over it.
Okay. David?
When it comes to the budget, uh, I attended several meetings and the counselors were going through it item by item and they had two rounds of cuts. So it's hard to see where you could cut it much more than what they did. There's a couple of things I could suggest, but as far as the current budget and the school budget, they are pretty lean. And I agree that some of the, uh, salaries that were increased last year and then they gave them bonuses on top of that. I thought that was a little irresponsible with so many people suffering through, um, the inflationary problems that we had. Thank you.
I think, um, what bothered me during my time on the council were the, uh, there are a few contracts that we do with no bid. Um, we need to go out to bid for, um, a number of things, I, I, what comes to mind right now is, um, our assessment services, I'd actually like to see that brought back in-house, but, uh, we have to look at the realities on that too. Um, I think some of our utilities have not been bid out and we can't always bid out on all the utilities, but a, a good, uh, purchasing policy, I think, is in order. Thank you.
Please describe your ideas for the future budget items of most importance to the town and how we will be able to afford it.
Reverse order, so Priscilla, you're up.
I think that takes us right back to, uh, the need to, um, develop additional revenue sources, uh, we, we have, uh, I, I just shaking my head. We have, uh, and now I've locked on the, on the question, um.
Larry, do you have it?
Priscilla, describe your ideas for the future budget item of most importance and how we can afford it.
Well, I think we do, I, I would like to see our schools, um, better supported. I think our, there are some programs that I miss and I would think a lot of us do, um. Our music program is really understaffed and not, uh, not gained amongst our kids, um, and our, uh, my one granddaughter, I'm out of time.
David?
When it comes to the budget, I discovered this year that they had done away with all reserve funding. That was a little bit of money that the town put away every year to buy police cars, ambulance, uh, public works trucks. And they did away with it. They said it was to save money. Well, they're not saving money because now, in this year's current budgets, nearly four hundred thousand dollars in payments for leases because they lease ambulance, they lease different pieces of equipment. And all those things cost money, but when you had the reserve accounts, guess what you had? You had money in the bank. You could go out and pay for it with cash. We did that. We built the new town hall up in the grade school with cash, over six hundred thousand dollars. And then we bought a new fire truck with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So you can't tell me that reserve budget's bad.
Aaron?
Um, I guess I would prioritize, um, in two areas. One is, um, making sure that we invest more into the recreation side here in town because, uh, we have a robust, we are extremely lucky to have one of these. Um, and, uh, so I think that draws a lot of, and it pays a lot of dues as far as community involvement. Um, and also, I think we should look into economic development and really start looking at, uh, spending money towards, uh, that process.
Roy?
So a couple of areas come to mind, uh, when, uh, one being, uh, David had a good point about the, uh, leases, it's, it, all of the leased equipment is basically wasted money and, and that's, uh, a very good point. Uh, the schools, uh, some of the programs that have cut on those would be great to be able to, uh, bring some of those back for the students. The, the other thing is infrastructure with the, the roads and the, uh, I think it would be very important, right now, all the deferred maintenance on all the roads, if you take a, uh, quick trip up some of the Turkey Lane, for example, um, uh, they are in terrible, terrible shape and really need to be redone, in most cases completely redone, not just, uh, putting lipstick on a pig and throwing a new coat of paint.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Roy just mentioned, uh, the, the big capital improvement that I have on my mind and that's definitely the roads. There are a lot of roads that are in very rough shape in this town. Uh, I'm gonna speak again to something that I said a little bit ago. One thing, you know, how are you going to pay for it is by creating a long-term comprehensive plan and following it. You need to have that plan in place and know how you're going to fund it. Um, so strategies, I mean, finding more revenue service, uh, revenue streams in this town is obviously something that needs to be done, but following that plan is going to help pay for these sins down the road.
Thank you.
You know, if we had a ten million dollar surplus, we probably wouldn't be getting this question. So my most important budget item would be for another position to be added to the town, uh, an ambassador for Winthrop, I guess, if you will, a, a planner, um, you know, some, somebody who's good with, with development that would go around and actually call on businesses, not from Winthrop, to, to entice them to relocate or locate or, or develop their business in Winthrop. We need to be more aggressive on how we reach out to, to the business community. That, this is where our next stream of revenue is gonna come from. The residents can only afford so much and, and so we've gotta get, gotta get it in from the outside. Thank you.
Next question. What is your position on the need for a re-evaluation of town properties for tax purposes?
Gil, we're starting with you.
Yep. Well, again, I, I think that's, that's a state requirement in some cases after a certain number of years. I think we've gone over maybe by four or five years now and I think that's gonna end up affecting our state revenues that are coming back. Um, it, I think it's only fair, uh, and I know- Um, it, I think it's only fair, uh, and I know that the property evaluations are gonna go up, but the town needs to have a base from which they can tax, the, tax us, the residents. And in some cases, it might reduce your taxes. I've never seen that happen before, but it could happen, I suppose, in a beautiful world. Uh, but, but I think it's, it's only fair that, that folks who have gone and done upgrade to their homes actually end up, uh, contributing back to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little bit mixed on this issue. Um, with the way the housing market has been these last few years, it's totally unprecedented. And I think some of the values that you're going to get out of this study may be, maybe bad uses, probably a poor time to do it. Um, that said, if you do a revale, uh, one thing that's important for the council to consider is that having a larger tax base does not mean you have a larger budget. Keep the budget flat and lower the mill rate to ease the burden on folks that are having their valuation increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy?
I think it's important that, uh, the, we keep up with the, um, the process as, as this, it's been mentioned already, the state, state funding, uh, relies on that. However, I as well think that now may not be a stable enough time to, uh, to do it, uh, based on the fact that the, the numbers are absolutely crazy, no matter where you look. Uh, when that's gonna break, I have no idea and I don't think anybody does. However, it's, uh, it would be, I think it would be only fair until wait, to, to wait till the, the market stabilizes a bit.
Thank you. Aaron?
Okay, um, so, you know, the prospect of reevaluation, um, given the current market, i- is horrifying, to put it bluntly. I mean, it is, uh, there will be people that will not be able to afford their taxes, um, if you're near waterfront, um, especially if you're on a single income. So regardless if we have to do it, there has to be a plan in place for those individuals and there has to be, um, some understanding, um, you know, depending on what the state ends up doing as far as being able to freeze the taxes or not. Um, but there needs to be a process because it, it will make it unattainable for people to live in Winthrop. We have a huge amount of waterfront, uh, frontage to consider, so that's my position.
Thank you. David?
In two thousand seven, uh, we did the evaluation. And unfortunately, taxes didn't go down. But of course, in two thousand seven, the real estate market was booming just like it is now. So because of that, all of the evaluations were high because that's what was selling at the time. And right now, evaluations are high. But at Monday's council meeting, the gentleman that came to explain appraisals said, "Right now, if you set up to do an appraisal, it wouldn't be for another two to three years." That's how busy they are. Everybody has to do a revale. So in two to three years, we don't know what the market's gonna be, but hopefully it'll be less than what it is now.
Priscilla?
Revale is something that the state and the town really need to do. Um, I'm interested to hear that, that we may be able to get ourselves three more years, but, uh, two thousand seven is what now, over fifteen years ago, so, um, we're overdue, uh, and we, if, if we can do some, uh, good economic development in the next three years, maybe we'll luck out.
The clue. Next question.
This question states that the new budget for the town was kept below the rate of inflation this time around. In light of that, uh, why don't we actually help the town by doing more things? And if so, what would you do?
Okay, so.
Yeah, uh, aside from bolstering schools, I think the, uh, rent department is one that I would like to see, uh, uh, fleshed out, if you will. That our rent department currently consists of an opportunity that we've made, uh, to take advantage of for years now with, uh, with the Y, with YMCA. We actually have a YMCA and I think Lonnie told me it's the only one in the country that doesn't have ground facilities, so, um, and we have a stellar, uh, rent program for what we've got. We just gotta make sure that we, uh, treat it well in the next few years.
David?
Yes, the budget is a little below inflation rate currently, but it's only because if you, anyone had attended the budget meetings, they would see the counselors worked very hard to try to keep it down so people wouldn't be impacted by the inflationary period that we're in now. So I think the council did a pretty good job. The only thing I was upset of, they didn't have any of the reserve accounts. But I think that's gonna change. I hope it will change. And for more revenue in this budget, there is a position for a planner. And that planner will do his job and do due diligence to read some of the ordinances and he will be working to find new revenue streams such as grants.
Aaron?
Okay, um, so yeah, kind of reiterate, I, I do think that, uh, the areas that we could look to improve would certainly be the recreation. That also includes, you know, the upgrades to the Norcross Point, the beach, whatnot. Um, on top of that, also adding and making sure the planner is, um, gonna be productive in ways of updating the ordinances and untangling some of the things that have been left uh, for years. Um, and then on top of that, there may be other opportunities, um, to get funding and funds, especially with the opioid, um, settlements, uh, that could benefit the, the town greatly as well.
Thank you. Roy?
I think a good way, uh, that we can, we can look at this is also the use of the planner. I mean, that, that was why the planner was brought on board, uh, the, get everything squared away with the ordinances and, and all of the other pieces that will, would entice some, uh, businesses to come into town and, you know, get that economic development booming and create, uh, a revenue source there. I think that would be, uh, one of the best ways to do it.
Thank you. Don?
I wanna echo something that, um, David said a moment ago. One of the reasons that we, the budget was under inflation was because they made cuts several times to it. Um, so I mean, adding additional services or, or doing additional things because of that isn't really, you know, something that was discussed with this, with this particular budget. If they wanted to do extra things, you wouldn't have cut the budget as much as they did. So, um, in terms of doing extra though, um, I agree with the rest of this panel that, um, the planner is going to have a significant part of that. Um, you need the, I've said it over and over again tonight, you need to create a comprehensive plan and follow it.
Thank you. Gil, you're up.
Uh, again, I'd like to echo this, the sentiments of the panel as well. I mean, a lot is being put on the shoulders of this planner, uh, because a lot of this is expected. Uh, growing our, our tax base is the best way to, to start putting in all of our additional projects that, that we would like to see come to fruition. Going after every grant, going every, after, after every business opportunity is gonna be critical. We don't need to spend to the level of this crazy inflation, uh, bogey that's, that's been out, uh, countrywide right now. But at the same time, we need to be cognizant that this also could be an opportunity to expand what Winthrop has. Folks, we've got all the pieces here, the waterfront, the downtown. It's just a matter of putting it all together in one comprehensive package and, and going after it and, and getting that revenue to come back into town. Thank you.
You're up.
What is your position about the town having a goal of flat budgeting? And what should be decreased in staffing or services in order to accomplish that goal?
So Gil, we're gonna start with you.
Yep. So I gue- I guess I, I hate to, I hate to sound like a broken record here, but for those of you who remember records, uh, but, but again, right now, that's the town, that's the council's position. But if, again, all of a sudden we end up with, with a surplus, that position is quickly gonna, gonna, gonna switch around. We, we really need to, to take a look at everything that we have to offer in this town, put together a package and, and then go out and solicit businesses. That's gonna get us some extra revenue or at least it's, it might reduce the burden on some, some of our, uh, some of our taxpayers. But at least we, if we can get this money to come back in, uh, then again, this, this flat line becomes an issue of the past, uh, quicker than not. Thank you.
Thank you. Don?
I think the, I think the idea of having...
I think he's gonna turn you up over the edge.
Sorry about that?
Back on.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll read.
No, no, yeah, reread the question. Somebody from the online must have reread it.
I'm repeating the question because I asked it quite a while ago and we've all forgotten what it was. Is it, is it a worthwhile goal and what is your position about the town having a flat budget? And if that goal is important, what would you consider cutting? Decreasing staffing or decreasing services in order to accomplish that goal?
Don, you're good.
Great. Uh, I don't think it's important. Um, I, I think it would be great if you could, but if you look around, inflation is a real thing, prices go up. And, you know, you have to pay employees more, you have to give them raises, costs of fuel goes up. All of the bills go up, so having a flat budget is just simply not going to happen, the way the economy works. Um, um, as far as cuts are concerned, um, I'm not really interested in cutting things, but like everybody's brought up tonight, um, finding additional revenue streams is important. I think keeping the property tax rates flat is a lot more important than keeping the budget flat.
Roy?
So I think, uh, the idea of a flat budget is a target. Um, I don't think it's always achievable, especially when there's inflation year after year after year. Uh, a flat budget is, is really unrealistic long-term. Uh, I do think that we, with the, you know, the planner and the additional revenue streams and, and taking on tasks such as, uh, purchasing plans, um, the, uh, bidding, bidding out some of the utilities and, and stuff like that, I think that it can be achieved short-term, but long-term, I don't think a flat budget year after year is anything that anybody really can realistically expect.
Aaron?
Uh, yes, uh, to reiterate that, it, it's not realistic. Um, I was fortunate enough to have been a part of the process with our last comprehensive planning. Um, and that just reminds me that we should all give Patrice Button a very large thank you. Um, and, you know, as part of that, I was also part of the recreation, uh, committee and we looked, a lot of the stuff we did in that comprehensive planning, we looked at kind of as wishes, right? Well, we're there at the point where we can actually start implementing a lot of those in this comprehensive plan. Um, and you should be thinking about what Wyndham was maybe ten years ago. Um, there was no way that if Wyndham or towns in that area, you know, spent at a flat rate, when their populations were increasing, you know, the shift, the paradigm has shifted, right? And now it's gonna be Winthrop, so we wanna make sure that we keep up with growth.
David?
Flat funding is a good idea, but it's impossible, uh, for the simple fact that, uh, inflation. But also because there are a lot of union contracts and they all get raises every year. And the big thing that irks me about the union contracts, I don't know who's negotiating for the town, but they're not doing a very good job. If a single person is hired by Winthrop and they don't have a family plan for benefits, they get a five thousand dollar bonus. How many of you get that? How many businesses for that? Winthrop does it, I don't know why, but that's where I'd like to cut. They say it has to be done because the policy for the town talks about everybody being equal. I'm out of time.
Priscilla?
I, I'm in the camp that feels that a flat budget is certainly a, a, a worthy goal, but unachievable. Um, we have, uh, a number of, of items. Insurance, for instance, actually goes up just about every year, uh, that, that we have no control over. It's not as bad as the schools, from what I understand, but it is, uh, not, not all of those line items and some of the bigger ones are not under our control, the council's control. So, um, as a goal, it's great. As, as a reality, we're, uh, more likely to be able to tag it to something more like a CPI or, uh, some government thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions coming in a slightly different direction now. We're all aware when we watch the news of, uh, the big things that are going on in our country, the big arguments that we're having, uh, gun violence versus Second Amendment rights, uh, pro-abortion, anti-abortion, how much, how little we should support the war in Ukraine. These are things we hear. The question is, how important is it for the positions of people running for town council on those issues? How relevant is it to their election to a town council?
Wow. I, I think, uh, they are relevant maybe in terms of how well we, uh, get along with each other sometimes. But I do think they're gonna be minor. Um, most of us are, uh, friends and neighbors, no matter what our, uh, belief systems are, or almost no matter what our belief systems are. Uh, so I don't think they're very relevant to town at all.
Okay. David?
When it comes to guns, abortion, all those, the war in Ukraine, town council can do nothing about those, nothing at all. So as far as running for town council, I have no position on any of those items because it will not affect us whatsoever. That's all stated, I think.
Aaron?
Uh, yes, so I, I, again, it's certainly true that those are macro issues and we're more focused on micro issues. Um, it's just about, uh, respecting everyone's opinion and their right to have it, um, at this level. That's fine.
Roy?
The relevance of that is at nil, but it's, there's, the, what should be relevant, uh, when considering the town council is what's best for Winthrop. Uh, the, the rest of the problems, uh, going on in the world is not something we're gonna change at the town level. Uh, and, and really we should be up here listening to the citizens, lis- listening to the people that wanna get involved, the people that are open ears and doing what's best for the town of Winthrop.
Don?
Those issues are certainly not going to be resolved at the town council level. However, it is important to, to note how folks are, are treating those issues. For, for us candidates, how are we looking at them and how are we treating others with differing viewpoints? That's what's important, is that are we respecting the opinions of others or are we going at these issues with a close mind?
And Gil?
All right. I, I think it's important to respect where people come from. However, we can't solve world peace at the Winthrop Town Council level. So therefore, I think it, it's irrelevant to the administration of this town. Thank you.
Next question.
What is your position on the role of town council in reviewing and influencing the content of books that are in our schools and town libraries?
Starting with you, Gil.
I think that's a question that needs to be addressed to the school board versus the town council. Thank you.
I don't believe the council should have a role in that at all.
Roy?
I also don't believe that the council should have a role in that at all.
Aaron?
I would just suggest that, uh, there's precedent set in the courts and the US Constitution and, uh, that's, uh, what we adhere to, so.
David?
Um, when it comes to the school, there's a school board, they would handle that issue. When it comes to the library, the library trustees would handle that issue. The town council would not be handling those issues.
And Priscilla? And Priscilla.
The town council has nothing to say on that. Well, they may as persons have something to say on it, but not anything that we have to legislate on.
Next question.
How do you feel about partnering with local nonprofits? Uh, Masons, Kiwanis, local churches, other nonprofit groups in order to achieve the goals of the town? What are the benefits and what are the detriments of trying to work partnerships with these nonprofits?
Okay, so Priscilla, and we'll repeat the question after Aaron.
We already do partner, as I've said, our rec department is with the YMCA. We partner with, um, uh, on some items that we still need to address. Uh, uh, transportation, especially for people who don't have their own, with the, uh, um, the Roman Catholic, uh, charities. Um, and there may be more, but I absolutely think that we have opportunities that we can take advantage of and will when they come up.
David.
Most of the nonprofits in town do a very good job. I haven't heard of anybody that's asking for assistance. Uh, if they do, it's something the council would look at, and if it would help the town, I don't know why we couldn't work together.
Aaron.
Um, I would say maybe even these partnerships probably make Winthrop stand out a little bit more amongst other communities. Um, whether it be the soup kitchen, have those closet, um, or, uh, you know, other types of, uh, involvement in the community and Rotary Club and YMCA, it's crucial to the identity of this town as far as getting things done and, uh, making sure that we have input in the community and involvement. So I would say it's absolutely crucial that these, uh, continue.
Roy.
I would say, uh, any, any of the involvement from nonprofits or, or anybody else for that matter, uh, should be welcomed by the town, the community, the council, uh, anybody looking to step up and, and donate their time, donate resources, uh, to help others, I think should be welcomed.
Don.
I think these partnerships are absolutely critical. You can look around town and find all kinds of examples of where nonprofits has stepped in and made this town a better place to live. I mean, North Cross Point was, was created by the Lions.
Oh, Aaron.
Uh, so it's important to keep those relationships. And if there's projects around town that need to be worked, you know, you can solicit the help of those folks and it's mutually beneficial partnership, so I think it's critical to continue those.
Gil.
We should and have welcome most partnerships and volunteers, and that's a trend that really needs to continue. Thank you.
Is anybody writing a question that they're going to run up here and give me? Back to you.
Okay. Somehow we stayed on time. Good shot to everyone. So, um, each candidate is going to get a minute for a closing statement, and then that will conclude the evening. So, uh, starting with you, Gil.
Well, in closing, I would be honored to receive your vote. This election, due to its nature as a special election, and due to the number of candidates vying for the open seat, will be decided by a handful of votes. To those of you who support our ideas for a better Winthrop, please don't think your vote does not matter. It has never been an election where one vote can make a difference, this might just be the one. Please get out and vote on June thirteenth. The lines and the waiting times, if any, will be short and well worth it for what this can do for our Winthrop and our residents. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Don.
Uh, once again, thank you to everyone who had a hand in putting this event together tonight, um, as well as everyone who participated and everybody who came out here tonight, participated in, uh, by Zoom. Uh, just to summarize, uh, my work experience, education, and previous service on the council have given me the skills that I need to be a productive member of this council. Uh, my motivation is strictly to serve the community. I don't have a political agenda. I will always listen actively with an open mind to any issue that's brought to me. And I will work as a member of a team to make our town the best that it can be. Thank you again for your attention this evening.
All right.
First of all, thanks, everybody, for coming out, and the library for having us here, and, uh, the, the involvement of the community is great. I, I like seeing all the people out here and, uh, interested. Um, and I also want to apologize for my terrible public speaking. This is way outside the box for me. Um, but the, I, I would appreciate, you know, the, the votes. I would also welcome anybody, uh, to contact me directly if they have any questions, concerns, want to discuss anything. Uh, I do much better speaking in person, one-on-one, than I do standing up here in front of everybody. Uh, again, I appreciate everybody's support coming out, and, uh, thank you.
Aaron.
Uh, yes, I want to reiterate too, uh, thank you to Richard and, uh, all of those involved, uh, in the community that have come out. This is, this is why I'm here, uh, this is why I came back to Winthrop. Um, and, uh, it's nice to see. I would just encourage that we continue, um, getting together and talking and, and being a community. Um, you know, I, I grew up here, I wasn't always, you know, maybe in front of everything, but I was in scouts with Lee. And, you know, I was, you know, it's just great to see, you know, tons of people out here. And, uh, so yeah, that's, I appreciate it. If you do get a chance, you can vote and write my name in, uh, if not else.
David.
In closing, I'm glad to see so many people that I haven't seen in a very long time. Uh, I was busy, when I left the council, I left to take care of my parents. They needed assistance, and after nine years, they finally both passed. And now I've cleared up everything, my life is in good place again, and I'm ready to come back to the town council to help you all. I've served twelve years, three years as chairman, two years as vice chair. I have the experience to come back to the council to try to bring some respect and stability to what has been going on. So I thank you all, I would appreciate your vote, at least consider me for your vote. And my name is David Ram, and I do approve this message.
Thank you, the library, and, uh, Richard, and Joe, and Mike, and everybody else who had a hand in, uh, making this such a successful gathering. Um, and everybody online, thank you for being there too. Uh, I have always enjoyed being a part of the team, the, the council team, and would ask for your vote to do that again. I'm looking forward to the comprehensive plan, which is having its own problems with, uh, staffing of the needs that are there. Um, we have, uh, many of our groups are active. I think you have to read everything everywhere because, uh, we haven't got our newsletter together yet. We will, and I look forward to, um, another good session, uh, with your vote. Thank you very much.
All right.
Oh, I, I just want, I just want to say, I hope that I will meet every one of you at future elections too.
Well, this is your first thank you from the library, and it's helpers who put this on. Thank you very much, uh, it's wonderful to see a large turnout. And while each candidate only got a little bit of time to talk about the questions, I thought the questions were creative, and I think the audience questions were terrific. Uh, and, uh, while we don't know in-depth everything that each of these candidates has to say, um, I certainly became acquainted with these people and learned a lot tonight, and I hope you did too.
Thank you all for coming. Thanks, Joe, Anthony, Lieutenant Wean, and thanks for helping out. And thank you to all the candidates, uh, for coming tonight. Very important, okay?